I'll call this International Falls Regular City Council Meeting to Order. It's 5:30 PM on Monday, August 18th, the year is 2025. Please rise as we say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, all members of the council are present except for Councillor Buller, who is absent. It is time to approve the agenda. Excuse me. With any additions or deletions? Are there any additions or deletions from council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councillor Wagner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Holden. I was going to suggest maybe you would consider an amendment. I would ask that the retirement letter from Director of Public Works Brokaw be moved to new business, as well as an agenda item to discuss the vehicle tracking.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Friendly amendment, I'll accept.
Thank you. Are you amendable to those changes in addition?
Yeah.
Councillor Holden, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Agenda is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, on the agenda, approval of minutes from previous meetings. First, minutes of the Monday, August 4th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. And second, minutes of the Monday, August 11th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is there a motion to approve these as presented?
I'll move.
Motion by Councillor Kaler.
Second.
Approve. And a second by Councillor Wagner. Is there discussion on the approval of those minutes? Seeing no discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 Although yes, minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, on this evening's agenda, payments of claims and approval for payment of accounts payable. First, transfers. City of International Falls transfers to Fund Number 401 Permanent Improvement, from Funds 601 Water, Funds 603 Sewer. To Fund Number 403 Reserve for Capital Outlay, from Fund Number 601 Water, from Fund Number 603 Sewer. For total transfers, $95,833.33. Additionally, accounts payable and claims. City of International Falls Claims, International Falls Public Library Board Claims, For a total accounts payable and claims, excuse me, $652,239.16. Is there a motion to approve these payments of claims and transfers?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councillor Holden. Is there support for that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councillor Kaler. Is there discussion in the motion or the question? Seeing no discussion, call for the question.
Aye.
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 Although yes, payments and claims are approved for zero. Thank you. Next, on this evening's agenda, is Audience Open Forum, which is the opportunity to address the city council on any matter not listed on the agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Name and address for the record if you come forward. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. Do my name and address in just a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lois Lundin. I'm a resident of the city, but I'm here tonight on behalf of Bacchus Community Center. Address is 509-900 Fifth Street, International Falls. I gave each of you a copy of a letter that I had presented to the mayor on May 1st of 2025. And I'd like to read that so the community can hear the letter. And then I'll explain my purpose in being here. On May 1, 2025, I wrote, Dear Mayor Dill, I would like to extend an offer to the City of International Falls regarding space for the International Falls Police Department Office space. My offer is on page two, following this summary. The IFPD offices are currently housed on the third floor suite of the Bacchus Community Center Building. For your review, the lease consists of a work environment that is protected. It is equipped with secure entry. Guests call for assistance from outside the office area while employees access the workspace by using a unique fob. The suite is completely finished and is very professional in presentation. The net lease area is 4,877 square feet. There are 10 soundproof locking office spaces. There are two meeting and conference spaces, and there is a mini kitchen and break room space. There are storage and utility spaces, and the suite has an independent heating and central air unit. All officers and employees have access to the building after hours by key or by fob. And there are 10 parking spaces designated for the police department in use on the west side of the Bacchus Building. All utilities are included in the rent. Bacchus maintains all common areas, lawn, snow, and grounds. The entire Bacchus Building is sprinkled, has updated alarm systems, and Bacchus maintains all system inspections. The Bacchus Building is ADA compliant and is equipped with an elevator. There are conference rooms, a small theater space, and a full-size gym and auditorium space that are suitable for training and meetings of all sizes. Historically, Bacchus has provided the use of those spaces to the law enforcement teams free of charge. The city currently holds a month-to-month lease with Citizens for Bacchus AB. Bacchus agreed to freeze the lease amount at $6,446.33 per month. Citizens for Bacchus AB would like to extend an offer to the city for a longer-term lease of that secure space. Bacchus would freeze the rent on that space at its current rate of $6,446.33 per month if the city would sign a lease agreement with Bacchus through May 31 of 2031. The rental rate will not change. The level of service will remain solid. There are many advantages of having the police department remain at Bacchus Community Center. The officers and the staff are in a safe, secure space. The Bacchus location is central to the city, easy to access, and citizens are very familiar with it. Bacchus is affordable. The long-term set rate makes this piece of budgeting very predictable. The space is established and very suitable for the police department's needs. And there will be no interruption in service for the community. I'd like to add that to date, there have not been any service failures brought to my attention. All needs, all requests that have been presented to Bacchus have been addressed immediately. There have not been delays. I will be completely transparent with a benefit to Bacchus that has not been widely shared to the public. And this is my purpose in bringing it to the public tonight. In December of 2009, Bacchus financed the renovation of the third floor suite where the International Falls Police Department resides today. The payoff date on that loan is May 1, 2031. That's the reason for the date referenced earlier in the letter. Having the International Falls Police Department stay on site at Bacchus meets a significant need for the police department, and it provides Bacchus with the support that it needs to satisfy the terms of that financing. Without a renter in space, Bacchus is at risk. While city appropriations have been lower than they were in the past, Bacchus is very grateful, very grateful, for the support that we receive through the rent of the third floor office suite. This rental has truly been a win for both city and Bacchus. I understood, I understand that moving the International Falls Police Department to Bacchus was to be temporary, but I don't see a reason that Bacchus can't be longer term. In light of community concerns that have been raised, I believe that having the International Falls Police Department remain at Bacchus would be considered a sound solution by many in our community. The math makes sense, and the level of service makes sense. I ask that you please keep Bacchus in your list of choices as you work to determine the best location for the International Falls Police Department. I know that later in the agenda, there's going to be discussions that have happened between the city and the county. And I truly want the city to do what is best for the International Falls city, the residents here, and the county, as well as the police department. But I ask that you consider leaving the police department at Bacchus, not only for the financial reasons, but just for the good that the partnership brings to both the Bacchus Community Center and to the police department. I'm not asking you to say no to the county's offer. I'm not asking you to say no. I'm just asking you to sit back and say, maybe not right now. Please do consider this. Any questions for me?
Thank you for coming
Thank you.
forward and for the relationship that's ongoing that we currently have with Bacchus.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
There will also be the opportunity towards the end of the meeting, if anyone would like to come forward. At this time, we will move on to the consent agenda, consisting of one item, to acknowledge letter of resignation from Sheldon Zook, an emergency medical technician, effective immediately.
I'll move.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councillor Holden. And the question.
Aye.
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 Although yes, item on the consent agenda is acknowledged unanimously. Thank you, new business. Item one, consider nomination of President Pro Tem. Thank you to Councillor Wagner for running the meeting last week. The committee of the whole in my absence. Is there a nomination?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Tim Wagner for Pro Tem.
We have a nomination by Councillor Holden to nominate Councillor Tim Wagner.
I'll accept.
Thank you, Councillor Wagner. Is there support for that main motion?
Yes.
There is by Councillor Kaler. Thank you. Any discussion before we vote?
Well, I'd like to say he handled that meeting well. We put him under the gun to take over the meeting that night. He never argued about it, so.
He didn't have much choice.
I like, I think he'll do a good job.
Thank you for, I am just fine with that. Question.
Aye.
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 Although yes, we have a President Pro Tem that has been elected, better known as the backup mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
New business, item two, mayoral proclamation declaring September 15th through 21, 2025 as Sea Trax Think Train Week. Is there a motion to approve this mayoral proclamation?
I'll make it.
Motion by Councillor Holden. Is there support?
Second.
By Councillor Wagner. Discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. This is approved for zero. Thank you. Item three, new business, consider year 2025 license applications for Men Sea Store, Inc.
I'll move.
Motion by Councillor Kaler to approve.
Second.
Followed by Councillor Wagner with the second. Is there discussion on this application? Please, Councillor.
Could you explain that?
Yes, so Men Sea Store Incorporated is purchasing the Joe Quick Mark's effective August 25th. And they're asking to continue the same licenses that Joe's Quick Mark has. They've sent in all the information that is required for all the different licenses. And with your approval, we will send it off to the state and move forward.
Thank you.
They have two locations, by the way.
Yeah, is that the one here and then the one out?
Yes. Right, my bad.
By McDonald's?
Yeah.
They change their name about one, two years.
Yeah. Any discussion at this time? Question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries for zero. Licenses are approved. Thank you. New business, item four, appointments for North Koochiching Area Sanitary District Board. For those not familiar, after many, many years, and there are finally some changes to the makeup of the North Kooch Sewer District Board that were done legislatively last session, which effectively gives the City of International Falls representation with three of the seats instead of four. The appointments I have proposed are as follows. Citizen Robert Thompson, term August 19th of this year through January 31st, 2027. Councillor Holden, again, August 19th of this year until January 31st, 2028. And Councillor Walt Buller, term beginning August 19th of this year until January 31st, 2028. If this is approved this evening, it will move on to the North Kooch Board Meeting, which I believe is tomorrow. Is there a motion to approve these appointments to NKASD?
So move.
I have a motion by Councillor Wagner.
I'll second.
Thank you. Second by Councillor Kaler. Discussion from the council. Seeing no discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Appointments are approved for zero. Thank you. New business, item five, from Public Works Committee. First, item A, consider forgiveness of sewer charge for 1223 Second Avenue East. Councillor Kaler, this was discussed.
It was last week. Ms. Harris came and explained her situation, and it was in your packets. If you've read it, it's lengthy to get. The gist of it is she had a leak, got notified after some time, quite some time, it appears. They finally got it shut off during all this. And what happened is they got alarmed. She was out of town. They called her, got a hold of the city, and they told them what they could do. And it ended up, by the time it was all said and done, what happened? She had a broken pipe on her spigot going outside. So it was running underneath when it was on. And what she's asking for, so the amount, total amount comes to, it was 2285.52, but she would like to get the sewer portion forgiven, which is 1,247.98 of her bill.
With the thought being that the water did not go in the.
Right, into the sanitary sewer. What ended up wasn't outside. It was in underneath, I think, got soaked up in the crawl space, is the correct kind of.
Can I add to that, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes, so in your memo there that I wrote, it was actually 89,300 gallons of water that did go through, that was during the time of the leak.
Yeah.
There was actually 700 gallons that she used at her residence. So the total was $1,216.94. How I came to that amount was, there's a base amount for sewer charges, and she would be responsible for that regardless if she had a leak or not. So I remove those base charges from the amount that Mr. Kaler just said. I did also include a couple resolutions, or the resolutions. She asked that it be similar to a pool credit. So I did include in your packet what the pool resolution, how you qualify for that. And then I did also include minutes from the April 2nd, 2018, and the March 18th, 2024 minutes, where we have in the past denied this type of request and where we have approved this, a similar request, not the exact same type of leak as she has, so that you would have enough information to base your decision on.
Thank you, Mrs. Riggs. Is there a motion? Well, let me begin with, if we forgive the sewer portion, is that something that we would find consistent with how we have treated things like this in the past?
Yeah, we did. It was a March of 2024. And I know it's a touchy subject because it's, but I don't know how much who on the panel, you know, sometimes you can help accidents, right? It's no fault of their own where, actually, when people are filling their pools, they know what they're doing, they're doing right, and they're getting forgiven. So I would move that we forgive the sewer portion.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Kaler.
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Wagner to forgive the sewer portion as proposed for the packet. Is there any further discussion, the motions or the question? Seeing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Sewer charges are forgiven for the packet for zero. Thank you.
And I just like, she was very complimentary of said you staffed during this whole process.
Wonderful. Public Works Recommendations, item B, approve a resolution scheduling a public hearing on proposed assessment on the Fifth Avenue West Project. Is there a motion to schedule the hearing, which would be held 5:00 PM September 15th of this year, right here at City Hall?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councillor Holden.
Second.
Second by Councillor Wagner. Discussion on scheduling this hearing. Question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Hearing date is set as proposed and carries unanimously. Thank you. Public Works Recommendation, item C, consider proposal for services for Shorewood Drive Ravine Stabilization.
I'll motion.
Councillor Kaler has offered a motion to accept this proposal for services as proposed.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Wagner. Is there discussion on this? Or at the minimum, would either you, being that I was ill last week, would either you or Mr. Fisher like to give some background on the topic?
Sure.
Before we do vote.
Jason, if.
Thank you.
See what you missed. See what you missed when you were ill.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yeah, this particular project is one that we identified in our One Watershed, One Plan project. And it is a ravine that's, that's being eroded. The outlet has collapsed, and it's being eroded through the neighbors' properties and is threatening their, their structures on their property. So we would, so we've got funds to do the project through Bowser, but we just need to get the engineering proposal approved. And it's a cost share, so they pay 75%. We pay 25% of this total project, so. And we're hoping to get that done this year yet, so.
And like I said, I was trying to find the locations. I found them the other day. And it's a rather big ravine, by the way. And the erosion, I can imagine that's going on there. And it's just nice to see that a lot of times we're in these committees, like the One Watershed plan of stuff, and we're getting already some return from our investment and the grants that come from the state. So I think this is a very good use of the funds and the city funds to match.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion with council? Question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. This is approved for stabilization for zero. Thank you. Public Works Recommendation, item D, consider change order for 2025 Stenberg Addition Storm Sewer Project. Jason, we should have had you.
Yeah, this is really out of my will.
I'll give you the floor at this time.
Yes, this is part of the mill and overlay project that we're doing for Stenberg and 14th and the parking lots. We've identified the storm sewer that we would like to relocate that out of the street. And so in dealing with the contractor, we got a price. And once we remove all the items that we would not have to do, once we move it, we wouldn't have to do the full-depth patch, the additional cost of this project would be $75,504, which we would pay out of the sales tax account. So we would recommend this. One thing, though, is this will not happen this year. They have to move a gas line before we can get this installed. So it would happen next spring. And this portion of the roadway would not be milling overlaid until after we get the storm moved.
Okay. So to summarize that, the Stenberg project would be moved to next spring?
Just this portion. We will mill and overlay the rest and do the other concrete work. That will happen this year.
Okay. And this entire project is being paid for with our sales and use tax?
Yes.
Yes, that's my understanding. So I just want to get that information out there. We fielded, as a council, many, not complaints, concerns about the storm sewer in Stenberg that has essentially pushed the existing asphalt up. Yeah, I had a lot of calls that, don't do this because it won't be fixed properly. So the idea of this is to move the storm sewer where you have your little path drawn.
Yes.
And fix that permanently and hopefully. And fix that permanently, and hopefully not need a dune buggy to drive through Stenberg Addition.
We're doing our part. We can explain, well, nature, what might be in Stenberg Addition. But that's a story for another day.
Okay.
One thing, one thing to add is, we do have a public hearing, or a neighborhood meeting, at the project site tomorrow, at four-thirty to six-thirty. So, it's an open house. So-
Wonderful.
People that might have questions.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Is there a motion-
I'll make the motion.
That was fast on the draw. Counselor Holden with the main motion.
Second?
Second by Counselor Wagner. Is there discussion on the change order? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Change order is approved, four-zero. Thank you. Next on this evening's agenda from committee of the whole recommendations last week, item A, to discuss the Mighty Ducks Grant Application for Eliminating R-22 Refrigerant for Indirect Systems with International Falls Recreation Hockey, I believe Rec Hockey is here. If you'd like to come forward at this time, please do. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, and thank you for coming in. Counselor Wagner, I was not present at last week's committee of the whole, but I understand that Cary Park was discussed.
That's correct.
And it was, again, added to this city council meeting for the grant application that I believe we already approved the submission of at a previous council meeting.
I guess I don't know that.
Okay. I, I know it's time-sensitive, but if you folks would like to fill us in a bit on, you brought it to our attention, and this would require a local unit of government, which we are.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Jared Baldwin, thirty-three, forty-one, County Road twenty. I'm here on behalf of a board member of International Falls Rec Hockey Association. We brought this agenda item to the council because in the past couple of years, we've continued to have compressor issues at Cary Park Arena. And knowing it's a large expense, we wanted to look for opportunities of grant money to try to offset that cost. The International Falls Rec Hockey Board is looking at options on ways to help with this project. But to turn down a grant of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to offset this expense is pretty tough to swallow. If that compressor is to fail this year, it's detrimental to our community and to our association. We have ten tournaments scheduled in the winter that fill our hotels in times when the community isn't as busy. We've had a good working relationship with the city for many years, and we hope to continue that. We've done a little bit of research on our own, and we've been working with a company out of Burnsville, Minnesota, Modern Mechanical Ice Systems, and the salesperson is by the name of Dan Metcalf. He's gonna have a quote to us tomorrow. He's got a refrigeration ice plant, it's built on a skid. They're becoming more and more popular, and the cost of that system is under six-hundred thousand dollars installed complete. Like I said, we'll have a formal quote from him tomorrow for that plant. That includes installation. There's a little bit outside work, where we'd have to pour a concrete, an engineered concrete pad, and have some electrical move from the current building to that site. But we're just hoping that we can continue this relationship and figure out a way, working together, to make this work for Cary Park Arena and our community. You know, we'd, we'd love to go to the bank and say, we need two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, but we all know that they want collateral. We don't have collateral in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We built the dryland facility last year, that took us ten years to save for. So, I understand it's a large expense, but I just hope we can try to find a solution to make it work.
Thank you. I have questions for council that, with the current state of Cary Park Arena, it likely not feasible to build the new arena if we had to come up with any money for it. We still have the arena, it still serves a very important purpose locally, economically to the youth. With the grant, our liability in it is that we're the LGU, and if we're chosen as the recipient, we would have options how to match those funds. So, I guess is what I'm saying is, if we apply for the grant, and receive the grant, and have to come up with the quarter million dollars, that doesn't necessarily mean that the city has to come up with the quarter million dollars to, to fund that. And it may be a good time to also at least acknowledge the shape that the current ice plant at Cary Park is in, which is, I believe, why you've come forward with these concerns. Thank you.
And I think, we agree, we are, we're all aware, and, but that was one of Counselor Wagner's questions when we approved this. And yet, every, you don't have to tell me all about hockey, and how great, no one likes it more than me. I've volunteered my time over the years. And if we apply, and we're not committed having to come up with the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, just in case we don't have it, which, I'm pretty good chance we don't, considering the budget activities we got going on now. I'm fine with applying for it, and we can worry about getting the other half later somehow, or work with Rec Hockey, or some other entity. And it doesn't, and it, it's important to economic value, and I get that, all the value of the area from, from here to Littleford to up the lake. So, there's a lot of opportunities for, if we gotta come up with some money as a group, not necessarily just the city, there's some opportunities there to get some help all the way around. But I don't think, but I'm more than happy to prove, go ahead and apply for it if we're not gonna be committed to the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars on our own.
So, do you need a motion?
That's what we would need if we were going to proceed with applying for the grant. But I, I'm almost positive that we already did do that.
It was contingent on whether we had, whether we had, had to spend it.
That's why you came back, yeah.
Understand.
Yeah.
Can, can you give it, like Administrator Bergstrom, give us something?
Okay, go ahead, either way. Administrator Bergstrom and I did look at this. We, on the form, we have to provide matching funds. So, what we came up with is Rec Hockey could actually be the applying agent, we would just be the LGU that signs off on it, say we agree with it. You have to prove, though, that the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is available. And you have to go through all these other things of any other funds. And the entire amount we have to also show is gonna be covered, and we're able to pay back if we are borrowing, that sort of thing. It's pretty in-depth.
So, your suggestion is that Rec Hockey apply for the Mighty Ducks Grant with the city as the LGU, and we own the arenas? Am I understanding that correctly?
The application has to come from the LGU. The only thing is, is where's the two-hundred-and-fifty coming from? We have to show proof of that. That's the main part.
So, we can't write in TBD or-
No.
Contingent on financing?
No, we wouldn't, I'm sure people have done that. I don't think the application would be accepted, and it significantly would decrease your option of even being selected.
Okay. Seeing that we were going to build a brand-new Cary Park, did we have any funds in reserve that we were going to put towards that, that we could put forth for an ice plant?
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
So, I think, well, I think there's a little bit of confusion about us building a new plant. We were, we sought and received bonding from the state of Minnesota through our legislation to obtain one million dollars in design and engineering, to determine if that was feasible. And then, essentially, we needed to do that in order to potentially apply for additional bonding monies to secure funding for a new plant. The concern that we had last week at the meeting that you missed, and part of the discussion was that, given our current system, we have an R-22 indirect system, which is why we would only qualify for up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and we would have to then match two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. But based on the numbers that we have, and have been made available to us, we could potentially convert the system for upwards of five-hundred thousand. However, it's going to be roughly over a million dollars, given the fact that our compressors and electrical are at end of life. So, we can do one thing, but if we don't do the other, essentially, we're gonna have a converted system and an unfunctioning arena. So, unless we have plans to do all of it, it really doesn't seem like prudent use of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of local government monies, even if we can get two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of grant money.
So, thank you. Is the, so the suggestion is that a new ice plant doesn't do anything for Cary Park?
That there would be a potential, that given the state of the compressor. I mean, obviously, if Rec Hockey has different information, I think we'd probably be open to that. But that's based on the information that we have in front of us at this point.
We'll have that information by noon tomorrow. I tried to get it today, but it was, came together kinda last minute. So, we'll have that information tomorrow by noon, and I can get that to you guys. And this is a whole-new ice plant condenser. It's built on a skid, it's outside. We'd have to move the electrical from the existing building to this, and everything is tied into a panel. It's not, they're starting to see more and more of these throughout the U.S. And this company deals with hundreds of, hundreds of ice rinks. So, I can get that information to you tomorrow, and we can come back to the table. But the grant's due the twenty-ninth of August. So, we're under some time constraints, and I'd rather want to figure out how to come up with three-hundred thousand than five-hundred-and-fifty.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Other concerns while we're on the topic are, if, what do, what is our plan as a city if, on February first, we have no ice plant at the arena?
Well, it's not good, because, and I know you know that. I mean, that building's sitting there with refrigerant that doesn't make spec anymore. And, but the importance of that arena is, you know, this town went with one arena for quite a while since, I don't know what year it was, it got built sixty-something. And it's in need of two arenas. There's no doubt with figure skating, and all the young kids that are in the arenas, it just needs both arenas running. I worked in there for a long time after it was given to the city. And I want to praise the city for what they did, because when they got it from hockey, it was just a shell. And we built compressor buildings, put compressors in there, built a concession stand, built an outside rink, and it was all done through the city of International Falls. Beautiful complex at the time, probably. It's, it's actually still a good complex, it's just stuff's getting old. Refrigerants old, compressors have been dropping out here and there, and they have two of them in there, and they alternate back and forth. And if you didn't have two of them, we would have been in trouble. One would go down, and we could at least keep it going with the other one.
If I'm not mistaken, we're going to just one? No?
The second one's supposed to be up and running. But that's the issue, is that the control bucket, which controls the compressor, and Jason might know a little bit more, but there's a control bucket that continues to fail. And there was gonna be some engineering, or somebody was coming to look at it. But commercial refrigeration was supposedly putting another one together for that compressor.
I would say for the community, it's really important to have the two. We own Cary Park. And somehow, we gotta put our heads together on what to do. And I know you're under the gun, but-
And there is, you know, there's, we're under the gun with this grant, and, you know, we just, we understand it's a lot of money, but we're trying to find solutions that work for both of us. You know, we're willing to do what we can if we need to fundraise, if we have to try and come up with more money. But, I mean, our season's planned out from October first. We've got tournaments scheduled, we've got everything going on. And the hope is that we continue without a glitch. But if something goes south, we're in a predicament.
Well, I would like to add that, I mean, I think it's becoming known that if something catastrophic happens at the arena, that it's safe to say that's the end of the Rec Hockey program. Well, certainly, at least what you do here. Now, there's a lot of need within the city that, as a council, during budget season, we're trying to fill. So, in no way am I saying that we should spend tonight a quarter million dollars of taxpayer money. But if our plan is that the arena is just one day-
Gonna die.
Gonna die, and we don't know when, that doesn't seem all that stewardly either. So, a couple places that, at least I would like to discuss as this goes on, maybe it is worth the investment if the city divested of the arena. So, I'm not looking at it totally from the perspective of, you know, we, that the city gets the grant, comes up with the quarter million, there's an overrun, that's another hundred thousand, this is all hypothetical, and then we're stuck owning it and maintaining it. And I've heard that kicked around. Please, Counselor Wagner.
Is this, can you apply for this next year?
It comes around every so often. It hasn't been out for a long time.
But it could possibly.
There's a possibility, yeah.
I mean, this is a lot of money, where we're under budget, just like you said, to be on the hook for, if we agree to this. So, I, I think you give it a year, look for your fundraising, come back, say you got, you got a fundraising, you got somebody that's willing to donate a bunch of money, maybe the city looks at it a better favor. That's just the way I see it.
So, what, so what would be the outcome, then, if we have a lease agreement with the city from October until March thirty-first, if the system goes down? Just end our season?
I don't know, Bronco, maybe? They'll let you use it?
There's no ice available at Bronco. The ice school uses it, there's one hour a day available for Rec Hockey.
Well, I think they'll keep piecing it together, just like they have been for the last few years, and hope it keeps running.
You got one compressor that's still running, Jared?
Well, both compressors have been rebuilt in the last couple of years.
Okay.
Is it, is that what it's called, Jason, a control bucket? It's basically the electron, electrical components of the compressor that keep shorting out and burning wires off and-
Okay.
Doing some weird things. So, I mean, we're okay with that, if we know we're gonna continue to try and piece it together. We just don't want to, you know, one day the ball drops, and, sorry, kids, hockey season's over.
Well, like I say, we're lucky we had two, because they alternated, and they took the workload off of each one. They go back and forth, alternating. And I know when they lose a compressor, that they at least had another backup, and that was enough to run the plant.
And that, and that's what's been happening when we've been losing the other one, but it's all temperature-dependent, if that one can keep up.
Yeah.
My concern is, none other- My concern is none other than, um, that, you know, where are, what is our plan with this? If it shut the arena down and the city, um, has this need out there with a service we have that we've had a difficult time with and other needs of other departments that probably come first, and I think we need to focus on that and maybe say it, but to be in limbo to the level that it seems like we're at, that's my concern, that I don't wanna wake up one day and have to call any of you and say, "Well, the bucket blew up, there's no arena. Go home." I think your concern also is that you pay us for the ice time in the arena, um, which is another topic.
Mayor?
Please.
I, I have one thought, um, and I, I don't know off the top of my head if this could be an EDA discussion topic, um, 'cause there are some funds there. You already thought of it.
I haven't mentioned it.
Okay. How much does Rec Hockey have to contribute? Do you know offhand or the other thought is, I don't think we're gonna solve it tonight, is potentially calling either a special city council meeting, include EDA and have that discussion all around the table, giving everyone time to figure out what money is available and also get the quote, so we know actually how much money needs to be come up with. And to answer Emma's questions, that I don't know what you were saying, but there's different parts and we could figure that out as well.
And I, I agree with Chelsea's sentiment because the language in this resolution, I mean, when it's saying, "Be it further resolved, the applicant has the financial capability to provide any required matching funds," and then it goes on to say, "Be it further resolved, the applicant hereby pledges to complete the project or phase if it exceeds the total funding provided." So, in the end, if we end up with a project that exceeds what we anticipate, I, I would rather see whatever his quote comes in at or some sort of accurate numbers to be able to say, "This is what it's gonna cost, so we have something before we complete this paperwork and go in blindly."
You'll have your information tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow by noon, he said he'd have it to us.
Well, we have a seventy, is it seventy-two hours to call an EDA meeting?
Uh, yep, a three-day, mm, it is seventy-two hours, which is kinda like three days.
Which should be Friday morning?
Yep.
And then have a special meeting?
Sometime Friday morning.
Friday morning. You gotta have a motion for that?
To call the EDA meeting?
Yeah, special EDA meeting for Friday morning.
What time?
Ten o'clock?
Yeah.
Is that a motion, Counselor Holden?
Yes, it is.
Counselor Holden has motioned, I believe as a commissioner of the EDA, to call a special EDA me, meeting on this Friday morning at-
At ten a.m.
Ten a.m. Is there support for that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion on the motion to call that meeting?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Kinda based on the numbers that we've been talking about and what it would take to get a new ice plant up and running at Cary, what, what's the magic number, I guess, you'd need from Rec Hockey based on what you're thinking of?
I think-
What may be in EDA accounts available?
Well, I think the sentiment of the council is first, um, and I would echo what Emma said of, you know, where would we be at with a quote to do the, the ice plant with contingency and, um, with some things?
Sure.
So I, and that's, I know that your group has worked on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, for one, we, we don't even know for sure how much we have available-
Right.
-in DDA to have our meeting.
I mean, we just don't wanna come together and waste everybody's time on Friday if, I mean, we've talked a little bit, Jared, as far as possibly what we would have to contribute to it, but we just wanna make sure it's within reason and so forth. So maybe even some, some phone calls or something before we have a meeting to exchange some numbers. I mean, is that appropriate? As opposed to, you know, like I said, coming together to meet if we know going into it that it's not gonna work?
Right. Well, I think that Counselor, or Mayor Protem Wagner, do you have any thoughts on that?
I, I'm sure you could, um, but again, it's a, it depends on what's in there.
Yeah, we won't know, we can check what's in there, what else we have and what it all works, but it won't be a waste of my time to come here on Friday at ten o'clock when we get all the information.
So just, just for our, um, information, that the funds that come out of that EDA account, is that, what do you typically use those funds for? I mean, I know it's earmarked for economic development, but is there a certain budget you have that you have to spend every year?
Mm-mm.
No.
Is every situation is-
Yeah, we take them one at a-
Only, the only money that's spoken for is, um, paying off our, this is leftover-
Leftover from-
From the, from the rent-
Okay.
From the VMP, so, but, but that money that they pay us is used to pay off the bond for the building.
Okay.
And we also have funds that we gotta put so much away.
Okay.
So our EDA is funded at this point with any leftover funds and we'd have to look at that closer, 'cause I don't remember them off the top of my head, what we have.
And that's just about all paid for, isn't it, if I'm?
About eight, eight years ago.
Eight years.
Okay.
Bought a twenty, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
And I would like to add, we're in the discussion before we vote here on calling the meeting-
Yeah.
Just to move us back to that, but, excuse me, the city also has a reserve for capital outlay portion of parks and rec that we haven't gone through budgeting for yet that we typically do.
Yeah.
That may even be tomorrow, um, or the next Tuesday. So I think that there's some information that the city needs to pull together as well-
Okay.
-to, to further the conversation.
Okay.
But there isn't a lot of time, as you've pointed out.
And I just really wanna reiterate too and just have it on record that, and it was said earlier, I realize there's two arenas in this community, but we do not have the ability, if something happens to Cary Park, to make up our tournaments, our practices, games, what have you, over at Bronco Arena. Um, if Cary Park goes down and it's not fixable, we truly do have to end our season. And I'm very concerned that, you know, we create a plan moving forward-
Yeah.
-because it takes a while for plans to come together. There'd be no guarantee that we'd be up and going the following season, unless we have done our homework and have put together a good plan that's workable for everybody, so that's all I had to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Uh, Emma, you had to request-
Well, I just had a question. Uh, Jason, would there be someone at Bolton and Mink if we get plans together, say tomorrow at noon or whenever it, tomorrow, the information comes together, that we could have someone at Bolton and Mink vet some of the information to make sure that it's in line with accurate figures, especially if it's drastically different than what we've been anticipating in the past? Okay.
Regarding the EDA meeting, and thank you, Emma, thank you, Jason, Counselor Wagner.
Regarding the EDA meeting, probably only gonna be three of you here, so I think my suggestion would be to move it to Monday.
Okay.
Okay.
But that's still time for this thing to go through.
Yeah, I agree.
You're amendable to that.
Yes, yeah.
And, um, I need to look at what we have going on Monday.
I think, when's Walt back? But do you know when Walt is back?
Back Wednesday, sometime Wednesday, so he's not avail, he wouldn't be available till, I believe, Thursday.
Okay.
We could have it, we can have it before the, uh, special meeting and then the open house. Good idea, Counselor.
On Monday.
On Monday.
And a-
We got this Monday.
Sure.
Do it before that.
Yeah.
Cause we have the-
There's, there's a special, yeah.
Five-thirty or four-thirty?
Well, we already have the special ambulance meeting scheduled five-thirty.
Four-thirty?
Four-thirty.
Okay. And you're both amendable to Monday?
Yeah, four-thirty.
Four-thirty P.M. Okay, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. We will move this discussion to Monday at four-thirty P.M. to an Economic Development Authority meeting, and that would conclude our action for item A, discussing the Mighty Ducks Grant. Thank you for coming and you're welcome to attend the EDA meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, for, for sure.
Thank you. Number six, item B from Committee of the Whole, approve advertising and hiring three part-time seasonal staff for parks and facilities.
I laugh 'cause, I'll, I'll move.
Second.
I laugh because, or no, I laugh, it's apropos, it's for seasonal workers at Cary Park.
That was what I was going to make sure was on, um, the record. Sherry, is this anything that you have, any info you have to bring forward at this time?
I can answer any questions.
I, I don't think we have any.
Okay.
This is the staff that we would typically hire on a part-time basis to make sure that we have ice to play hockey on. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Counselor Holden, is there a second?
We are.
I'll second.
We are, I think we already have this motion.
We already have one?
Yeah, I did.
Kaler and Wagner.
Yeah.
Goodness gracious.
Okay.
We already have our motions. Kaler and Wagner, thank you for pointing that out. Is there any discussion before we vote?
No.
Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, this is approved, three, four-zero unanimously, thank you. Item six, Committee of the Whole, recommendation C, consider replacement options for the vacant director of public works position.
You haven't accepted his retirement yet.
Yeah. We gotta do his resignation letter that we moved.
Okay.
You don't have to officially accept it. Okay. All you have to do is acknowledge it, so you can discuss it. It's a little weird.
That's who we are.
Good, uh, good catch, Chelsea. Okay, we will move this to the end of the meeting. Number six, Committee of the Whole, recommendations D, consider preliminary agreement and contract with Koochichin County for leasing space to house the International Falls Police Department in the county law enforcement center. Counselor Wagner and I have met with two members of the county board, uh, in several instances, essentially throughout the summer. The preliminary agreement terms and conditions, but not limited to, uh, I will summarize, a lease amount of fifty-thousand dollars annually for twenty years. The county will put a portion of that, of those funds annually into their building fund for future building improvements. Refurbishment of the current space in the law, the old law enforcement center of a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars roughly, with a fifty-fifty split of the cost. Percentage increase on utilities after one year to allow time for county to understand the cost of utilities for the space the city will occupy. Three of the garage bays for the next several years, eventually leading to all garage bays. Shared space in the basement for the next several years. Designated parking spaces on south side of building for the PD. International Falls Police Department sign for the outside of the building and first right of refusal to the city of International Falls if the county ever wants to sell the building. The, I'm not sure what we're looking for specifically in the sense that I believe the county is formalizing an agreement or a draft agreement to present to the council formally at this time. Is that your understanding, Counselor?
Yeah.
Thank you. Questions on the subject from any of the counselors?
Do we need a motion? Forward?
We don't have an agreement or a-
No.
-definitive contract. This is, um, verbal, there's been back and forth and, um, last week, there was acknowledgement of what they were going to propose at their county board meeting. Thank you, Counselor-
Thank you.
-Wagner, and we will look forward to moving ahead on this matter when we have something formal in front of us.
And I think when we get the formal, then we'll, you know, we'll get another group together with Chief Kosick and Administrator Berstrom and Chelsea, uh, to go over the nuances of what it looks like.
Okay.
But those are the fleshed-out terms, basically. Three to five years to get up garage space in the basement and, um, the refurbish will be kinda two stages, but, uh, right now, the first one will be about eighty and a fifty-fifty split. But then Chief will be able to go in and have them put wherever they want their, their offices and, uh, server room for Todd.
Okay.
And we have seen, um, some hard numbers and estimates on, um, some of that, and we will be presented with a draft agreement which will then become formal.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the council will have the opportunity to decide the fate of the location for the IFPD.
All right.
Moving on to item seven, approve promotion of Rory Gillo to lead equipment operator?
I'll move.
A motion by Counselor Kaler.
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden, is there discussion on this promotion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, this promotion is approved, four-zero, thank you. Item eight, approve internally posting for the equipment operator greater position, and if no internal interest, authorize advertising externally. I have something I would like to add, but Counselor Kaler-
I don't know, I would-
Signaled.
Not to step, you're told, but I will, I will move to post internally further position, but if nobody signs for it, not to post externally, um, I'm for not hiring any outside parties to work at Public Works at this time.
Counselor, you took the words out of my mouth, thank you for that motion. Is there support for Counselor Kaler's motion?
Second.
By Counselor Wagner, thank you. Discussion on the motion or question? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, this is approved, four-zero, thank you. Item nine, consider approval of the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-seven labor agreement between the city of International Falls and law enforcement labor services.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner. Is there support for Counselor Wagner's motion to approve?
Second.
Second from Counselor Holden, this would be for the new contract with employees of the police department. Any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, this agreement is approved unanimously, thank you. Item ten, discuss International Falls ambulance service. Letters have gone out, progress, uh, has been steady. I would like to hand it off to Counselor Holden, as our working group met last. Jogging my memory. You have the floor, Counselor.
Well, thank you. I'd like to speak to the public here tonight and let them know that we had a meeting between the county and the city- Um, started off shaking hands, and after two hours of discussion, we shook hands at the end of it. And, uh, that's something I think might even be brand new. And, uh, it went good. That's about all I can tell you. It was our first meeting and it was excellent, and Mayor Dillon, myself, and a couple of the county commissioners, uh, the four of us sat down and, uh, no rocks were thrown, no torpedoes, it looks good, moving on. I'm pretty, uh, pretty sure that we can work this thing out and probably for, I don't know how many years there was, whatever, but I think, uh, the bridge is gonna get mended, so. That's about all I can say right now.
Thank you, Counselor Holden.
Yeah.
I would echo Counselor's thoughts and there is being progress being made, so there will be, uh, updates weekly on the, on the topic. Next on the agenda, which was an addition that I asked for, um, as mayor, it has been brought to my attention that there has been an issue in the Public Works Department with tracking of vehicles. I would ask you, Chelsea, at this time, um, what is the requirements to have a city, a closed session city council meeting uh, to investigate with the city council and your counsel present?
You wanna investigate, um, like misconduct?
Yes.
Oh, okay, um. It does have a clause that allows a closed meeting, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
The process so the council can meet with you, um, to discuss what our options are and what we have learned through the process.
Okay, so did the investigation start or you're asking to open?
Asking to start that process.
Okay.
Or to consider it.
Yes, there is a clause in there to discuss misconduct, um, is it on a certain employee or the department as a whole?
Um, I, at this point, I can't say definitively other than, um, it's been brought to my attention that certain vehicles in that department have had GPS tracking devices installed in them. That I do not believe is appropriate, especially if there was no consent given to do so.
Okay. Um, we can call a closed meeting. I'll have to figure out the wording a little bit better for the, what clause it falls under, but it, it does have an available clause to do it. We'll just have to figure out what exactly the wording is on it. Um, if it is a specific employee, um, I will have to look into whether that employee is allowed to be present or should be present, but we can get it done. And we do have to post for a closed meeting seventy-two hours?
Yeah, same post.
Yeah, seventy-two hours.
Yep.
Okay. That would just be when you want to schedule that closed meeting. And I will figure out the verbiage.
Would that work for the council or would there be support to have that closed session um, pursuant to Attorney Nelson's guidance Friday morning at ten AM?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, that's good with me.
Is there a motion?
No.
I'll make that motion if needed.
Thank you, Counselor Holden. Is there support for that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kayler. Is there discussion on the topic other than Chelsea, is that something that you can research for us?
Yes, I can get it, um, so it's ready tomorrow morning to be able to hold that meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, special meeting on this coming Friday at ten AM is approved. Next on the agenda, item twelve. We have a retirement letter submitted by Public Works Director Ted Brokaw effective September second, twenty twenty-five. After more than twenty-nine years of dedicated service to the City of International Falls, Mr. Brokaw's contributions have left a lasting impact and are greatly appreciated. Heard the memo. I would ask that we postpone this for a motion to postpone until we've had closed session.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
His, the letter of retirement is just acknowledged. He has turned in his letter of retirement. It's not something that the city council approves or denies.
Okay.
On a retirement, um, so. So there's really nothing, I mean, you can postpone as of the acknowledgement, but it wouldn't be the postponement or denial of his, um, retirement.
Understand, um, but he will still be employed at the city until his retirement date?
Yes, that is correct.
Just my understanding.
Correct.
Okay, would you like a motion either Betty or Chelsea for the record to acknowledge, uh, DPW Brokaw's retirement?
I think that's the cleanest record.
Okay, that was.
Yep.
What I was, is there a motion to accept? Mr. Brokaw's retirement?
Second.
Motion's in second by Counselor Kayler and Counselor Wagner, is there discussion? Seeing no further discussion, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, the retirement letter from Counselor Brokaw has been acknowledged unanimously, thank you. And now to what I believe is our last item that was moved on the agenda. Which is to discuss the Public Works Director vacancy upon the pending retirement of Public Works Director Brokaw effective September second, twenty twenty-five. Is there anything specifically in our city charter or by ordinance that states that we have to take action on this immediately?
Uh, the charter just says we have to appoint, uh, Director of Public Works. And I suggested last week that in, till we figure out what we're gonna do or how we wanna do it, that we would, uh, just, uh, have, uh, the utility supervisor and the assistant director take over what duties of Ted's that they can, but I think it to be cleaner, we should probably, for the time being, make, uh, the assistant Public Works Director Mike Wallace, the interim Public Works Director. Then, uh, Steve and everybody else will be under him and he can direct them to do what he needs to do or help him with along with the, uh, working foreman of the water department.
And to be clear, it, when, when we have to appoint someone per the charter, is there reasonability to it? It doesn't have to be today because we have a Director of Public Works.
Yep, essentially what, um, Counselor Kayler is, is what's called a stopgap. Um, which allows us to kind of sidestep a requirement while we sort things out.
Okay, so we do have some time after September second.
Yes.
To make that appointment, whether it be interim, stopgap, permanent, whatever, okay.
And I would just like to add to my motion of it, that I, uh, I'm, depending on how it goes, I'm looking at this as, as unfortunate as to lose, uh, Ted's expertise and years of service that, uh, has an opportunity to trim some salary in the city and if we can do it with that move right there and possibly make one of them the Public Works Director. That is my lo, my long-term aim there without having to hire somebody.
Thank you, Counselor Kayler.
I like the fact that his idea on interim, uh, with Mike Wallace, I think Mike will do a good job until we decide what we're gonna do.
And I would add and thank you that it is also budget season or time of year or whatever we wanna formally call that when all of this gets tossed around and ends up coming together, so there's, excuse me, more moving parts going on at one time. At this time, I don't believe we need to do anything, um, per what we've learned from Chelsea, so I will move on, is.
He had a motion.
He made a motion.
He made a motion, sorry, I didn't, what was your?
Uh, uh, it got longer to appoint Mike Wallace's assistant or interim.
Interim.
Uh, Public Works upon Ted's retirement.
Upon Ted's re, thank you, Counselor. Is there support for that motion? Thank you, Counselor Wagner, and this would be an interim measure.
Yeah.
Meaning that it is not, um, permanent.
Yeah.
Right.
Any more discussion?
Mm-mm.
Please, Mrs. Stenzlin.
Can I make a suggestion that if you're going to move forward with that, that you also consider some sort of pay compensation for taking on those additional duties and responsibilities and level of expertise that, that you'll be losing when, um, Director Brokaw leaves?
I would, I think the council would, but I would ask that if we are going to do that, that we don't consider that tonight.
Okay, okay, um, but if, okay, I, I was just, I guess I was a little confused 'cause if you're going to make the recommend, do you want me to come back with that some point of recommendation before September second or how, how would you like to manage that then?
Yeah, I, I think that, and I'm just one person and we're still likely gonna vote. That what hasn't been discussed at any point by the council, and so I think we should have an idea of what that is before we do that.
And, and thank you for reminding me that had crossed my mind that he's probably gonna need some type of adjustment. If she can come to the September second with what she would recommend for that as an adjustment?
I can give you my recommendation now if you wanted to think about or, or if you prefer to wait, that's, that's fine as well.
I would say the second.
Okay.
And we can get it.
Oh, yeah, I won't be here September second. But I will share.
You, but you can provide.
Yeah, you can, you can provide the info, yeah.
Yep.
And then we would postpone this until the September second meeting, is that what?
Well, we can approve him, then we can approve his compensation.
Okay. So at this time, we have motions by Counselor Kayler, Counselor Wagner to approve on September second, moving Assistant Public Works Director Mike Wallace to interim Public Works Director, subject to a compensation review on September second.
Yes.
Are you both amendable to that?
I would say too, uh, I would say he would have to agree to.
That was my, my next question.
That might be part of the motion too, you know, upon his acceptance, just, just a thought.
Are you amendable?
Sure.
Okay. Um, you folks offered the motion, so.
Yeah.
Okay, question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, that carries four zero. We will move to September second with that topic going forward. Is, thank you, Sherry, is there any other business to come before the council? Seeing no further business, we can move back to our audience open forum if anyone would like to come forward. Name an address for the record, limited to five minutes. Seeing no takers. Reminders. There's a special city council meeting, continue ambulance service discussion on Monday, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, five thirty PM. An open house to discuss Smokey Bear Park benchell replacement. That same evening at six PM. City offices are closed in observance of Labor Day on Monday, September first. The next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty-five. We have also scheduled other meetings that can be found on the city website until they can be organized in our notes from this evening. Is there any other business from the council, um, or staff at this time? This meeting is adjourned, thank you.
He don't.
Recording stopped.